Seven PM. All right, it is seven PM, so I'm going to call to order the regular meeting in the Common Council of the City of Platteville for Tuesday, March 25th, 2014, at seven PM, and we'll start with roll call.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Eileen Nichols?
Here.
Patrice Steiner?
Here.
Mike Den?
Here.
Barbara Doss?
Here.
Barbara Stackhausen?
Here.
Dick Bonin?
Here.
First item is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you would prefer separate discussion in action. A is minutes of the March 11th, 2014, regular council meeting. Jan, you want to make a note about date on there?
Yes, in the minutes, under the consideration of consent calendar. I have the wrong date of January 25th minutes instead of February 25th.
So when a motion is made, please include that change. B is payment of bills in our packet. C, appointments to boards and commissions. I haven't on this evening, but we have a lot of vacancies, so I would ask again for the general public to please fill out forms. We have Plan Commission coming up. We have the Extraterritorial Zoning Board of Appeals, which needs some people to serve. We also have some openings on the Historic Preservation Commission. That will be one as an alternate. So again, if you would like to volunteer, you can go to the city webpage, platteville.org, click on Volunteer Opportunities. That will bring the form up where you can fill in your information and which board or commission or committee you would be interested in serving on, and we would really appreciate it. D is licenses, a temporary Class B retailer's license to sell fermented malt beverages to St. Augustine University Parish at 135 South Hickory Street on April 11th from 4:30 PM to 8:00 PM for their fish fry. Two is a temporary Class B retailer's license to sell fermented malt beverages issued to St. Augustine University Parish at 135 South Hickory Street for May 4th from 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM for the parish festival. Also included in the packet is one or two-year operator's licenses, a list of those individuals, and also taxi vehicle and driver licenses. E is permits, is a request for a banner permit, Platteville Fire Department, from March 31st through April 13th. Two is a street closing permit from Delta Sigma Charity Band Festival on May 2nd. It would close Bradford Street from Greenwood Avenue, Bradford Street from Greenwood Avenue to and including the intersections to 345 West Pine Street. F is cancel uncollectible bills for the 2013 budget year. G is cancel uncollectible ambulance bills for the 2013 budget year. And H is 2013 fiscal year to 2014 fiscal year budget carryovers. Is there a motion?
I just have a, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
A banner for the fire department, Ryan?
Yeah, we're looking at putting a banner across Water Street, where like some of the United Way and stuff does for advertising for our fundraiser, so.
Which is? Your pancake breakfast?
Our pancake breakfast, yes.
And when is it?
Sunday, April 13th.
Okay. I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
With the change in the date as noted?
Yes, to February 25th from January 25th in the minutes.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
I have a couple of questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
On the uncollectible bills, the first one is the damaged street light, $3,201. Is there a possibility that this money might be collected?
Highly unlikely. We've got the, and it's taken to the court system, we did collect $600 of it, it was originally thirty-six hundred, but we really have no idea where this person's at. He doesn't have a driver's license, no social security number.
And my next question is, could you do some explanation of why this thirty thousand is being taken out?
Well, that's about 6.4% of our annual billings this year, so basically you can't collect that. You're not going to get 100% of your billings out there, so we're canceling, we usually write off so much every year, and this is within our budget every year.
So we just write it off? That doesn't make any sense to me.
We still try to collect it, I mean, obviously.
But what if we collect it? Where does the, then do we decrease the thirty thousand that we wrote off?
Yeah, the amount of receivables outstanding would be decreased, yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, then we'll vote.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is citizens' comments, observations, and petitions. We would ask that you limit your comments to five minutes. We have one person who has asked to speak, Mr. Winch, Dan Winch. You come to the microphone, please, and give your name and address.
My name is Dan Winch. My address is 345 Bailey Avenue. And as you may recall from last week's common council meeting and my subsequent emails, I am here because of, because I object to the ordinances set forth by the common council regarding snow removal on the sidewalks. More specifically, I object to the ordinances that unreasonably say that the amount of snow removal shall, that say the snow removal, excuse me. I object to the ordinances that unreasonably say that any amount of snow removal, even so much as an ounce, may be removed to and surpassing one, once, up to and surpassing once per second at an unspecified unlimited cost. The ordinance does not even limit how the said snow may have gotten there. So a corrupt city member may put the snow there on the sidewalk and charge up to an infinite amount of money for its removal some thirty-six hours later. This ordinance, as it stands, means that the city has the right to charge constituents any amount of money at any time. In practice, this means that the city's streets are not even kept to the level of cleanliness as is enforced and as I demonstrated in the photos last time. I don't believe that a single member of the community would agree to such a law if they knew it truly, what it truly states, or knew that there is no way to appeal this to the judicial branch of the government, which oversees lawmakers such as yourselves, lawmakers elected as representatives of the city of Platteville. In 1773, King George III passed into law the Tea Act of 1773. Colonists objected to the Tea Act because they believed that it violated their rights as Englishmen to no taxation without representation. King George and Parliament refused to adequately represent the interests of the colonists. Because of this, the United States is a country today. We declared war on the tyrant. In 2014, the city of Platteville issued unreasonable fees against property owners of its city for snow removal. The city council has thus far refused to so much as even discuss this matter or open it up to the public. Your job is to represent us. Yet, I don't believe that a single one of the citizens of Platteville would agree to work a lifetime to have it robbed by the city in a moment at the whim of the city as the law currently allows. By a show of hands, who among us wishes to be required to pay up to and including more money than we will ever earn simply because the city of Platteville demands it?
You're talking to us, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Winch, these comments are intended for the council. Please continue.
Yes, but you, in your trying to stick to this format, you missed a very important thing. Nobody raised their hands. If you aren't representing the people, who are you representing? Are you representing yourselves? If you anticipate any of us paying property taxes this year, you might consider representing the citizens of the city. Or are we set to have another tyrant on our hands? For this is taxation without representation. The Constitution written by those who overthrew the last tyrant specifically calls out that no person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without the due process of the law. That is the Fifth Amendment of the Constitution. If your law contradicts this, it is unconstitutional, and thereby it is null and void. I again ask tonight, as I will continue to do via appearances via these meetings and via email, that this be resolved by the council or by a judge in the form of a class-action lawsuit against the city, that you relieve my neighbor and me of the unreasonable fees assigned to us, that you change the law to follow the Constitution, and that you relieve Mr. Howie Crawford of his duties since he has allowed this to go on for years under his supervision. It is my understanding that this must be brought to a discussion in order for it to be taken into effect. Would any of the members of the council like to act on that now?
Mr. Winch, you have had email correspondence with the city manager and also with the city attorney, and no councilperson is going to respond. As we explained to you through the city manager's letter, we are individuals, but we represent the collective, and it is not our position now at this time to answer your questions. We have instructed city staff to address your question.
You have at this time the opportunity to bring it to a public forum, such that we may all come and speak, such that everyone may have a discussion over whether this is constitutional or not, let alone ethical or not. And you can all do that right now. Any one of you can say, yes, I want to see this brought to a discussion. And that's what I'm asking for right now, is for any one of you to say, I believe this is something we should discuss.
Our, we have instructed city staff to discuss this issue with you, and that's all that we will do at this time. You have about one more minute left if you'd like to say anything else.
Well, I was told that the city staff informed me that the way to appeal this is to come before the city council. If the city council is then referring it back to the city staff, who's the leader here? There is no leader. It is now.
I would recommend that you respond to Mr. McGraw's letter. Thank you.
Yeah, it'll have to come to a lawsuit, I suppose, but that does not seem like what should happen.
Thank you. That's the only citizen comment we have this evening, so, I'm sorry. Oh, you do. Go ahead.
On a happier note, I am reporting that from the funds that were left over from the Arts Board, the city, city hall received $800 for the purchase of public art to be on display downstairs, and I'm happy to report that three pieces have been purchased with the $800 that came from the Arts Board. And the three pieces were installed last night, and huge thanks to Cindy Shave and especially to Dan Allen from Engineering Department for installing the pieces. It took a while because there was a locking system on the back of all three pieces. They are actually locked to the walls. The three pieces are from Mark Hirsch, and I'm sure a lot of you know Mark Hirsch from That Tree fame. There are, with the help of the Ron Tree Gallery, the former Ron Tree Gallery Director, Nicole Felder, Nicole and I chose four of Mark's photographs of the 365 days where he was taking pictures, and that is installed on one piece. The second piece comes from Bonnie Simmons, a longtime Platteville member, and the third piece is from Cindy Shave. And on your way out tonight, I encourage you to look at them. They are on the side of the staircase, kind of across from the women's restroom, as you leave tonight. They look really nice.
Thank you for your effort on that.
I have one comment.
Yep.
I don't, I don't know that the tourism entity and museum reports were included in public information at any point in time, but I would like to make an acknowledgement that as a council member, I received both the tourism entity report and the museum report probably now a month ago. And I'm assuming everybody else got copies. These are required by our rules that these are produced, so I think it's important that we note that we have received them.
I think they could also be perhaps some of, well, I think the museum report definitely could be put online, and I would assume the tourism report could be as well.
True.
Okay. Onto reports, committee reports. Airport Commission, I don't have anything to add. Board of the Zoning Appeals, Den?
Nothing to add.
Garden Rec Animal Care Trust Fund, Stackhausen?
Nothing to add.
Historic Preservation Commission, Killian?
No addition.
Library Board, nothing to add for me on that. Parks, Forestry, and Recreation Committee, Killian?
No addition.
Police and Fire Commission, Den?
No additions to the minutes.
Water and Sewer Commission, Killian, Steiner, and Bonin?
No addition.
Nothing.
No addition.
These reports, by the way, are available in the packet, which is at the library and available at City Hall, so if citizens would like to read all those reports, they're certainly available anytime.
They're also available online.
They're also available online. All right, three places you can receive these reports. Other reports, Building Inspector Report is in the packet, also the Department of Progress Reports, and I would like to ask our city clerk to mention the election coming up.
Yes, we have an election on Tuesday, just a reminder. Polls are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Absentee voting is going on right now in the clerk's office, and it's available through Friday of this week, Friday at 5:00 o'clock. So we are open on Friday this week for voting. Okay?
Opening at 7:15 on Friday?
Eight o'clock.
At eight, okay.
And I believe we have some information about mapping and?
Yes. As part of our budget, we have a contractor, a consultant, that is working on a geographic information system called a GIS, and one of the products that they just recently helped put up for us is a voting map, and it's online. A person could access that on our website, and what you can do is you can click on your property, your house, for example, and it will explain to you who your, who your alderperson is, who the at-large alderpeople are for the city, and it'll also tell you where you go to vote. It also has additional information, as Jan had mentioned, about, about the time of voting, the date of voting, and things like that. It even has a photo of the Armory or Olzvik Hall in case somebody needs to know what they look like when they, when they go there. So I think it's a very useful tool. I think that people will be very pleased to be able to access that information.
And where do they find that, Howard?
It's on the city's website, in the advisory section on the right-hand side of the page. It talks about voting coming up next week, and I believe there's a link that will take you there.
And it's also on the clerk's webpage, too.
All right. And E, we also have Department of Progress reports in the packet. Any questions, comments from council members about those reports?
I have a question as far as library, as far as the HVAC system. What's the situation on that? Are you using out-of-town person group to do the work on a work that's not being performed in a satisfactory manner?
We did not have a contract, as I discovered, so we've been working about a year now trying to figure out who is what, finding out what questions to ask to find out how we can address the situation. We now have a contract submitted to Automated Logic in Madison, who are the ones who put in the original software. It needs to be updated in order to function properly. We also have quotes, are getting quotes for local agencies to do the maintenance on a regular basis throughout the year. So the maintenance will be done locally, but the administration of the online software program will be administered by somebody in Madison, and if we have situations, it will all be done remotely. So it's under control.
Was it a firm, I'm part of Sheen at one time?
Originally, but it was terminated by the previous director.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments?
All right, we'll go on to action items. First is a request to purchase Zoll Auto Pulses for the EMS from the Binding Trust donation.
Brian Allen apologizes he couldn't be here this evening. He's at training to be, to advance to a paramedic level. On his behalf, this is something that the city council has looked at in the past. At our last meeting, we debated whether to use the Binding Trust donation of $44,000, whether or not to continue to put that into a trust, or to use it to purchase Zoll Auto Pulse Systems to the tune of $31,046.99. At that time, it was requested that Mr. Allen update his memorandum, and he has done so, comparing what communities have the Zoll Auto Pulse, as well as where they receive the funding for them. In your packet is also a brochure for the Auto Pulse System, and at this time, we await your direction. Anyone have any questions?
I do have a question, Larry. The staff report says there is a small balance of Act 102 money. However, not all accounting has been completed this year. Do we know how much money is in there? And remind me again, what's Act 102 money?
Both of those questions, I think I'll have to defer to Dwayne or Valerie's.
Act 102 funds are, it's a state grant. I believe it comes from the 2%, I'm not sure exactly. I think that's with insurance. The balance in account, I'm trying to find quick here. I think it's several thousand right up hand. I don't, $2,100 looks like it's the balance right now.
That's all?
Yeah.
Did you say that there was information included that showed how other departments had funded these?
Yes, that was the request. I don't see that in his report.
I wasn't able to find that in these reports. I know which services have it, that is included, but it's not, it's not very clear as to the funding source for other.
I know when I spoke to Brian, he conveyed to me that these other departments were unable to use grants to fund a majority of it. I guess when I called, I expected that would be in the staff report. I apologize that it's not.
My recollection is that some entities were able to get some grant funding, and others, there was one instance where the hospital had agreed to pay for a couple of them. I don't remember what hospital that was, but there was some agreement with the EMS service in the hospital that they would pay for some of the equipment, and I think that's what happened in that case. There is a, another account, EMS account, which has $16,313 in it, but as Brian notes, it's a donation account. Some of the money was used when the newest ambulance was purchased, so he is reluctant to say that that account would be used, at least in its entirety, to purchase one of these units.
Well, I think I was the one that brought up that when we used trust monies with the theater, the expectation was that they raise half the money in order to be able to use that trust money. And so I would offer a motion, and the other question that remains unanswered is, our ambulance service is actually more than one township and stuff. So I would hope that it would be, I mean, and my understanding also is that the city of Platteville pays about 75% of the cost of the ambulance service. Is that correct, Dwayne?
Approximately, yes.
Right, it's about 75, 25, 25% of the expenses for the ambulance are actually charged against other townships, including the town of Platteville, which pays the second majority of that. And while I don't, I mean, while I understand this is lifesaving equipment, I would hope that the other townships are made aware of the gift that they would be receiving if the city of Platteville Trust Fund picks up this entire purchase. So I would offer a motion that we allow expenditure of one-half of the amount for each of two of these Zoll Auto Pulse mechanical CPR devices, and that one-half of each of those be expended from the Binding Trust, with the other one-half to be raised through the work of the EMS.
What about just one, and have the other one be raised?
Well, I think, I'm saying that if they need two, they need to raise one-half of each. I'm reluctant to say we'll buy one, because then it might be, well, then we'll just get one.
Okay, I understand.
But if you do the one?
We have a motion, we would need a second.
I'll second.
All right, motion and second. Go ahead, Mike.
Make amendment to the motion?
Okay.
I'd like to make amendment to the motion and say that we will purchase one. The reason being, that way it can get onboard, get ready right away, because it's important to have this piece of equipment. And then if they want to work at trying to raise money for the other one, that would be fine, but we need to put one onboard right away, because it might take a very long time if you do half of each one to even get one onboard.
Well, actually, Mike, they have the money in $16,313.72. Half of, half of thirteen, I mean, they only need $7,000.
Correct, but they don't want to, it took them many, many years to put that back in place.
I understand, but this would then give them impetus.
So there's a motion by Mike. Do we have a second to that amendment?
I'll second the motion.
We have a second to the amendment? Any other discussion on the amendment?
Frank, you think we should buy both of them at this time? I think it's a good idea. I watched the video on the Auto Pulse, and it's very good, so that.
Mr. Mayo, sit down, please, or leave the room.
This is a good material to buy.
Mr. Mayo, you are out of order. Please sit down. Please sit down.
Doug.
Please sit down. You know, I don't understand why people think they can be discourteous in a public meeting. So we are having a discussion. Ken, would you like to complete your comments? You may not have, the council members may not have heard.
My comment was that I think we should purchase both of them and not be that concerned about the funding here. We have sufficient funding, and if we want the townships and other people to contribute to this, then ask them to contribute, but let's not hold it up.
Any other comments on the amendment, which is to purchase one now? All right, seeing none, we're going to vote on the amendment.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
No.
Steiner?
No.
Den?
Yes.
Doss?
No.
Stackhausen?
No.
Bonin?
No.
Motion fails.
We now have the motion, which is to fund one-half of each with the EMS service funding the other half of each. Any further discussion on that? And we'll vote.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Den?
Yes, we need them.
Doss?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Next item is information and discussion, and tonight, a lean government presentation by Southwest Tech. And Larry, if you would do the introduction, please?
Sure. Charlie, could you come? Okay, by all means. And with Eileen's help, I think I'd like to introduce this. A while back, Council President Nichols asked me to begin looking at something called lean government. And lean government is something that has been enacted in several other communities across the state. Brown County has a website specifically dedicated toward lean government, and I believe Council President mentioned a few examples in other cities like Manitowoc and a couple other communities. Together, we sat down with representatives of Grant County and perhaps a couple other communities, and the state of Wisconsin is encouraging this momentum, this movement. The state is offering $2,000 grants to every jurisdiction, every city that wants to participate in lean government. So that's the state of Wisconsin encouraging us, and if we get a good consortium together, we anticipate we could save a significant amount of money on this training. So we've contacted Southwest Tech, and Charlie's going to present on some of the ideas that Southwest Tech has, and maybe give us a little lean government 101, so that the council has a brief idea of exactly what lean government 101 is, and so that the public may also see it. Yep. Excellent.
Just, just one minute, Charlie.
Nobody will be able to hear you.
Yeah. Do we have a microphone that we could provide? Okay, you'll come over once you start the video? Okay, great.
I'm going to turn these lights on.
It might be good to put the camera on the video.
Yeah, I can't see at all, Howard.
With the fire chief's help, we've upgraded some of our technology and we can show PowerPoints directly onto our cable channel. Hopefully, it all comes together nicely.
Governmental units at all levels are facing unprecedented challenges. They're striking the difficult balance between fiscal responsibility and a increasing demand for services for taxpayers and residents. Although it may have become cliche, the simple consequence of this challenge is the need for governmental units to do more than less. Costly providing unwanted service constituents continues to rise at rates over which the government has little control. The winter of 2013-14 has been particularly demanding in fuel, salt, and labor costs, and has put an additional strain on budgets, operating type of reduced revenue, straining undoubtedly further strain budgets, and the need for significant road repair, and in many cases, earlier than anticipated. Unfortunately, the cost of providing services to our communities has increased. Revenue has not kept pace. Flat property evaluations and reduced state aid to municipalities has put the squeeze on already tight budgets. Of course, taxpayers and residents of our communities continue to want access to street maintenance and slower removal, tightly garbage and recycling pickup, professional law enforcement, EMS and firefighting services. They want governmental staff ready to meet their needs from all to them, and expect government offices to be open when they want the service. And of course, they want it all, plus all taxes. The situation has left many government employees often feeling squeezed and advised to comply with the demands of their constituents and meet their own personal needs. As budgets are squeezed tighter and tighter, often employees are facing smaller raises, reduced work hours, positions left unfulfilled, and higher benefit contribution rates. Employees are often left feeling powerless and morale suffers. When morale suffers, service levels are often impacted. Governmental units from the Federal Environmental Protection Agency to Brown County, Wisconsin, have found relief from these difficult challenges by implementing a lean government as a strategy. Lean government is not an adventure. It's not a program. It's a comprehensive approach to running the business of government. Lean is a business strategy based on satisfying the customer by delivering quality products and services that are just what the customer needs, when the customer needs them, in the amount required, at the right price, while using the minimum of materials, equipment, space, labor, and time. As a continuous improvement model, lean focuses on the reduction of unevaluated activities, called waste, and the product and service delivery processes. Lean principles and practices evolved over several decades at the Toyota Motor Works in Japan. Taichi Auto became known as the Toyota Production System and helped Toyota become a world-class manufacturer of high-quality automobiles that consistently earns high marks from consumers for quality, reliability, and safety. The term lean was coined by James Woback and Daniel Jones in the 1990 book, The Machine That Changed the World. Machine being the Toyota Production System. Unfortunately, some people have interpreted the word lean to mean trimming fat, or more specifically, reducing workforce. This is a gross misrepresentation of lean. Although you never use the term lean, Aijit Toyoda, chairman of Toyota, would ask to define lean simply defined it as eliminating waste and respecting people. Lean provides a framework and tools necessary to engage employees at all levels in the organization in systematically identifying and eliminating waste. Waste is considered anything that is done in a process that does not add value from the customer's perspective. Studies have shown that prior to the initiation of a lean approach, typical work processes contain up to ninety-five percent waste. While not possible to eliminate all waste, this percentage offers a huge opportunity to improve service while reducing cost of providing that service. The lean process requires the development of metrics for cost, quality, productivity, and customer satisfaction that helps to identify and initiate improvement opportunities. Employees at all levels are engaged in improvement effort. It stands to reason that employees at the task level have the most insight in improving their processes and also have the most at stake in doing so. This involvement of task-levels employee has the dual benefit of improving morale while improving customer satisfaction. Of course, it's easy to suggest that lean might work well for manufacturing, but the government is different. After all, government doesn't make widgets. Except government does make widgets, and they're made by a process. And government widgets are made by a process that have a lot of waste that task-level employees know well and can identify and eliminate, given the opportunity. Your widgets include building permits, tax bills, street repair, collective garbage, a law enforcement call, an EMS response, and many, many more. Each have an outcome to the customer that is provided by a process that is really not so different from manufacturing. Lean, with only minor modifications to the manufacturing model, has been successfully implemented in the service sector, healthcare, and education. Lean has been successful in each sector, because although the widgets might be different, all have a process that delivers something of value to the customer. And that process has waste that can be eliminated to provide the unique widget quicker, at a higher quality level, with greater customer satisfaction, and at a lower total cost. And yes, lean can work successfully for government as well. In fact, lean has already proven itself at the federal, state, county, and city levels of government. Here's a small sampling of lean government results. Prairie County, Illinois, reports a fifty percent productivity gain for the issuing of building permits. City of Palm Bay, Florida, a twelve thousand dollar labor cost and thirty-three thousand dollar printing cost reduction by reworking their utility bill building process. Cape Town County, Colorado, a twenty-five percent reduction in budget development meeting time by streamlining the budgeting process. The city of Conroe, Texas, reports two million dollar savings on a forty-two million dollar general fund and fourteen point seven million dollar enterprise fund. And the city of Montgomery, Ohio, reports reduced amount of road salt used, saving forty thousand dollars, a third of their budget, and a fifteen percent reduction in overtime cost. On May 2nd, 2012, Wisconsin Governor Scott Walker signed Executive Order Number 66. This order requires state agencies to implement a lean government initiative. This initiative must engage staff and agency leaders in order to eliminate waste, save time and cost, and improve government services to the benefits of both state residents and employees, and annually report their progress to the governor at the beginning of each year. State agencies have been undergoing training and are initiating lean initiatives across the state. Brown County, Wisconsin, has taken the lead in initiating lean government and has seen dramatic results. Additionally, the state of Wisconsin, through Statute 16.08, is making funding available to local governmental units, city, village, town, and county, to assist them in their lean continuous improvement initiation. The language of the statute specifies the reimbursement made in the amount of up to two thousand dollars per invoice submitted for services that are related to the initiation of a lean program. Each governmental unit may submit two invoices over a five-year period. Over the last five years, Southwest Tech has partnered with multiple organizations from various sectors in the development of their lean initiative. Sector-specific core curriculum has been developed to assist partners develop the framework, apply the lean tools, initiate improvement projects, and provide the culture to sustain the lean initiative. The curriculum is fully customizable to meet unique partner needs and is delivered in a relaxed workshop setting, either in partner location or at Southwest Tech campus in Fenimore. Southwest Tech is currently working with multiple governmental units to develop a consortium to allow partners to pool their available state funding to stretch their training dollars further and deliver their per-participant and per-governmental unit cost. For more information on this partnership or on lean government, contact Charlie Dragan at the contact information shown.
Thank you. So what questions might you have? Either lean in general or lean government specifically? State funding or the consortium that we're trying to develop?
Charlie, do you have examples of municipalities that you have worked with in southwest Wisconsin that have...
We are just starting the lean government initiative. We, I could certainly give you a list with the partner's permission of healthcare and also industries that I've worked with. Lean government is still a new concept. I'm real honest with you, the southwest Wisconsin is in a leadership position. The state's pretty excited about the fact that we're developing a consortium down here.
And you've made presentations to other communities?
Yes. In fact, just last Thursday, yeah, last Thursday, I presented to Richland County. In fact, they may be interested in joining the consortium, because they have fewer municipalities to draw from, so they may be willing to send some people here. And so we'll see. And this is the first presentation, I believe, in Grant County, although we've had meetings with City of Lancaster as well, and City of Fenimore. I'll take that back. I did do a small workshop with the City of Fenimore, a four-hour workshop, on just kind of an overview of what lean government is.
And so what about, who are, do you have partners in your consortium already?
We've identified City of Platteville, City of Lancaster, Grant County, and City of Fenimore. As potential partners, yeah.
Now Richland County.
And now Richland County, possibly. They would like to do their own consortium, but obviously, they're drawing a smaller pool. They basically have Richland Center and Grant County, and Yuba, I think. I do have examples of our curriculum, the six courses that really constitutes the core of the curriculum. And I believe we identified for the consortium four of the courses that, I believe it's one, so... We've identified, I believe, four courses that we would probably initiate initially. Thank you.
I have a question, Charlie.
Yeah.
Of all these cities that were listed, you know, they gave the dollar amount on savings. For example, in Montgomery, Ohio, they saved forty thousand dollars in road salt. Now, how is it determined, you know, what you're going to go after to look for savings in, you know, certain departments?
Yeah. One of the things you do is to develop metrics that measure customer service quality and cost. And that really drives, it's, one of the lean concepts is database decision-making. So you would identify where your costs are high, or where you're not meeting the customer's needs, as an example. And so it's going to be the data that's going to be deciding it. It's going to be the strength of the task-level people, though, identifying the waste in their processes. It's really eliminating waste is what we're doing in a lean environment. In other words, things that we continue to do, because we've always done it that way, but add no particular value to the customer.
So say, for example, this Montgomery, Ohio example about saving forty thousand in road salt, was that just one example of Montgomery, Ohio saving money?
Yeah, it, yes. It happened to be a third of their budget, as I recall the data, yeah, of their, of their road, winter maintenance budget, yeah.
But I mean, so like other departments?
Oh, sure. Yeah, it's, it's across the entire organization.
Okay.
And typically, what you do is to get top-level administrators buy-in. That's where the initial training generally takes place. Although the most active projects, my experience has been the most active projects are actually with task-level employees. They have more at stake, in all honesty, because they live the waste every day. They're the ones that are asking, why do we continue, why do we continue to do it this way? And so even though you would probably have department heads as your initial participants, that certainly wouldn't be the end of the training. I think at some point, you'd want to bring in the task-level people. In fact, I think the City of Lancaster, they've envisioned that. They've envisioned having some task-level people involved from the beginning. But it would eventually be involved with all, all parts of government, all services provided. Charlie, do you have any information about how these folks did what they did? Or do you just have that, hey, we saved this much? Just have the result, yeah. I would welcome you to go on the Brown County website as well. They have actually a Brown County lean government page. And I think that that's a really good source. They've got page after page of projects that they've been working with. Thank you. Yeah. And there's very specific tools that are part of the lean family that result in the improvements that you've seen there. Any other questions? Okay. I thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
So Larry, did you need any other comments from the council regarding this? Or how do you envision moving forward with this?
Right now, the city has training budgets for various departments. And I think as, as the city moves forward, the, the grant funds that come to help pursue a lean government initiative, I think with the grant money, we would like to send several of our department heads, you know, anywhere from six to seven of them, to this training effort to try to bring back the message to the other staff members. And I guess that's the direction I intend to go. Next year, if, if the department heads have, believe it's something that they can implement within their departments, I'll be encouraging them to budget training dollars next year as well for the lean government initiative.
So is what I hear that you're going to try it over the entire city, training everybody first, instead of...
Well, I'd like to start with department heads to give them the opportunity to be...
Every department head?
Yes. Well, six or seven of them. I don't think I have funding for all of them. But what I'd like to do is give them the opportunity to learn the lean government way and develop ways that they could implement that within their various departments. And then determine what's necessary to do the implementation. They may need to send staff to training as well, or perhaps they can initiate the transition on their own. But I'd like to leave that up to them to determine.
Go ahead.
One of the things I'd like to mention is that we actually developed a project teams as part of the training. So as part of the training, you will actually have active projects. So it's not, not from a theoretical standpoint, it's very much of a practical standpoint. Others, we develop the tools, we identify projects. And by the end of the projects, by the end of the training, you either have a completed project or one that is very well-established that's going to be able to complete. So it's, it's very practical application. So as you send department heads, I would envision having active projects. And that's one of the issues with, you know, certainly as we, as we broaden the participants, I've been, I've been pretty consistent with the message. Send enough people that you can actually develop a project team, where you can get something meaningful out of the training, something of value to the organization.
Any other comments or questions from the council?
Is this something we monitor from year to year? Or just begin now and then, where does it go from there?
I think as the projects develop and we begin to see changes, it'd be worthwhile to monitor that, determine how much we're saving, what kind of an impact it's having. That'll help justify or determine whether or not we continue with the project.
So how long do you think this will work? What do you anticipate?
I don't have experience in lean government, but I'm looking forward to it. So I, I don't know. I'm hoping that when we make the change, it lasts forever and we're able to sustain that, that savings. Sometimes change is hard, but, you know, I'm hoping with the right training, we can move in that direction.
What has been happening for your recollect, what have you seen? You said Brown County? How are they doing? When did they start?
Charlie, I'm going to have to ask you to come back to the microphone, so everybody can hear.
Sorry.
I can't tell you exactly how long Brown County's been at it. Again, lean government is still a pretty new concept, at least in the state of Wisconsin, even though we do have a statewide initiative. At state level, the, the state agencies are going through training right now and are starting to identify projects. Again, I think we're kind of pioneers down here in southwest Wisconsin. As far as working with other lean agencies or lean enterprises, healthcare is, is an area which I think is somewhat similar to government in terms of, you know, providing a service. a service. And we have some very well-sustaining lean enterprises in the, in the healthcare facility within our district. And, and I want to underscore what, what Larry said, and that is that it's, it's, it's forever, okay? It's a way of doing business. It's a business philosophy. It's not a program, it's not an event, it's, it's a way of looking at how we serve the customer. And so, once you have the tools in place, once you have the culture in place, it should be self-sustaining. And, and again, once you're trained, you can continue to use the tools for additional projects. Part, part of the key is to helping people become astute at identifying waste in the process. Sometimes we're running a process we're so familiar with that we don't recognize and doesn't add value to the customer. Just, we've always done it that way, yeah. And I think that anytime you have paper passing from one department to another, or approvals passing from one department to another, that's probably ripe for, for process improvement and getting rid of some of the waste.
Our quick perusal of the lean government website for Brown County shows about fifty projects since 2009.
Oh lovely.
But it, I would remind that it is a county, so there's, you know, county home kind of things and how, I mean, you know, it's not like, not necessarily like our city, but...
Yeah.
It's a large county too, isn't it?
Uh, yeah, that's where Green Bay is, isn't it, I think?
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you plan to be involved with this as far as continuing coursework? So people can tap into this if they need repressur...
I would be the, I would be the trainer for this consortium, yes.
Okay.
Was that your, that was the question?
Thank you.
Does this have a start date, Charlie?
Um, we're still waiting to hear from the state when the reimbursement will start. They're still writing the rules for that. I think, I think we're probably ahead of the state. I think we're, we're ready to move faster than they are, I think. But I, I think a question becomes whether or not you can start the training, if there's a date certain that you can start the training. And again, we're still waiting to hear from the state on that. I would hate to have you start the training and then that, it's not reimbursable until starting at a certain date, so. But, and again, it's, it's not a huge amount of money. Two thousand dollars is not going to go a long ways, but it's, it's a start, and especially if you can pool, pool your resources with other, other entities.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll see, see how that works out with the state, getting their rules written. Next item on the agenda is resolution addendum C to mutual aid box alarm system agreement.
I'm going to ask the fire chief to handle that one.
All right, Ryan.
Sounds like a mouthful.
Yeah.
But it's actually really a minor adjustment to what has already been adopted in, in a previous resolution back in 2008 by the city. Prior administration was not in agreement with this mutual aid, so they had fire service stricken out of the, the agreement. So it, right now, just states medical, emergency medical services. The actual, the, the, the main agreement, they are unable to take fire service out of it. It's, it's emergency medical service and fire services, so that, that big, long thirteen, fourteen-page agreement will not be modified at all. That was accepted back in '08 and is still the, the legal document. The, the addendum is just that you're agreeing to accept that agreement. And, and basically what the, the mutual aid box alarm system is, is it's a, it started off with the, in Illinois, as a mutual aid agreement between agencies, and then it started moving across state lines into Wisconsin, Iowa, Michigan, and even Minnesota is part of it now, too. So it's up to like five states, and it's a statewide mutual aid agreement that has been adopted at state levels and then down to the local levels. And what it does for the city is create that agreement between the, at the community level, I guess, or the government level versus at an agency level. So where we in the past, like, only had a mutual aid agreement with other departments in the county, this will go to the entire state, anybody in Illinois that's part of it, anybody in Iowa that's part of it, and allows us to pull resources for a large incident or disaster or something from all areas that are part of this at no cost to the city. We ask for the resources, if they're available, they come. It also eliminates the liability risk to the city, because specifically in this, it states that everybody's covered under their own liability policies. So it leaves the city of any liability. If somebody got, if we call them, they come here, they get hurt, they're covered under their own department's liability policies. But that also goes both ways. If they ask us for resources and we have them available, you know, and we decide to send, you know, something to help a neighboring community, you know, if one of our members were to get injured or something, it would fall back on the city's liability, just like it does within the county now. So, it basically takes the old county level or department-to-department level agreement and takes it to a, a state and multi-state level, and protects us with the fire service stuff as well as the EMS services which are, have already been agreed upon, so. So really what we're asking for is just to add fire services to it along with the EMS services.
I, I recall that the, the question the last time might have been in terms of costs and expectations. So if our service is asked to respond to a situation, let's say in Freeport, we do it at our cost?
We would at our cost if, if we felt it was deemed necessary to go, or they really needed those resources. You know, there's, there are certain areas, you know, it'd have to be a really, really, really big incident that they're going to be pulling probably from us for, you know, It's, it's, it's more the advantage of having the agreements with, say, Lafayette County, Iowa County, Grant County, Crawford, you know, the closer areas that around us where we could, you know, draw from instead of, you know, going to long, long-distance ranges from us. I mean, the, the chances of that would be a very, very bad situation, and, you know, hopefully if we had, you know, even it may be just manpower or something where it would be some members going down to assist with the, you know, maybe some, some gas money and stuff like that. But, you know, I, I don't foresee much for, for fiscal effects to the city at all with it.
Any other questions or comments?
My, my question is, which states are covered? The agreement says Illinois and Wisconsin. Are you including Iowa also?
The...
Maybe the agreement was done before those states...
Yeah, I think the agreement, the, the original agreement was, was done probably before the others have come on board. So they're just automatically added into the agreement as the, the other states include it. So it looks like it's up to five states right now that have adopted and accepted this, this MABUS agreement, so.
The other states are included?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll have this on for action next time then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is new stormwater regulations presentation.
Thank you for allowing me to come here and talk to you about this at this time. I just wanted to let you all know that the DNR is in the process of finalizing their rules regarding adding new communities to the DNR regulations regarding stormwater discharges. And as we expected, Platteville is among those communities that are on their new rulemaking efforts. So I have a stormwater presentation here that, that we can go through. If you can't see that very well, we can darken the rest of the, you want to darken this one, too? Okay, let's, let's darken the other one, too, thank you. Okay. Next, thanks. Contents, I want to talk about our regulations, actions required this year, actions required next year and beyond. I'll go through some cost estimates and then we'll do a small recap. Next. Our regulations, NR 216 gives the basic requirements. I will go through each of these nine items separately to, to go through them. Public education and outreach. We must submit a program to DNR within eighteen months of the time that we get our permit. We start the program within twenty-four months. The idea here is to educate the public through a variety of methods, standard media, flyers, social media, any way that we can, on how the public can help reduce stormwater pollution. Public involvement and participation. We submit the program to DNR within eighteen months, again, and start it within twenty-four months. We need to include the public in our program. One way for us would be to use UW-Platteville students to help us in meeting some of our goals and requirements. That's one way. We also need public hearings and input on many of our reports that go forward. Any of these things are, are valid. Next. Elicit discharge detection and elimination. We need to submit a program and an ordinance to DNR within twenty-four months, implement it within thirty, and do our initial field screening within thirty-six months and annual field screenings after that. What this means is someone needs to go out and identify the locations of all of the pipes that dump stormwater into the round tree. And on an annual basis, we need to look at these pipes and make sure that we don't have pollution coming out of the pipes. People washing paintbrushes, oil, sewage, you name it. If we find that, then as part of the elimination process, we need to work our way back upstream up through the pipe system to try to find who's doing the pollution, correcting the problem. Next. Construction site pollution control. Submit a program and ordinance within eighteen months, adopt it within twenty-four months. Currently, we have our own chapter forty-six. All we will need to do is just review it and make any updates as necessary. Post-construction stormwater management. We need to submit a program and an ordinance within eighteen months, adopt the ordinance within twenty-four months. We've worked on this a time or two, looking at how to control stormwater pollution from properties over a long term after the construction is done. And parts of this includes the requirements for long-term maintenance, specifically things like ponds or other facilities to reduce pollution in, in our stormwater. Pollution prevention. This is our in-house stuff. We submit a program to DNR within twenty-four months and implement within thirty months. These are using best management practices, maybe some of these lean government practices, as, as we've heard about earlier, about reducing road salt, doing our street sweeping, catch basin cleaning. Stormwater prevention at city facilities, making sure that we have procedures in place so that we don't pollute the environment with, at our fueling stations, when we change the oils, in all of the things that we do as a city agency. We currently do not use fertilizer, but if we happen to have a golf course or did fertilizers, we would have to include fertilizer management planning in, in our activities as well. Stormwater quality management. We need to submit an evaluation to DNR within twenty-four months. Twenty percent reduction of total suspended solids. What that is, is that's the dirt that's carried away in the water. When you see a, when you see a cup full of dirt, a cup full of water from our storm sewers, there's dirt in that water, the dirty water. And tho, that dirt in the water are the suspended solids. We did this initial study back in 2004. We studied approximate area of forty-nine hundred acres that included our, what we call our sewer service area. Mo, the City of Platteville plus those areas that could be served by sanitary sewer. At that time, they said that with no controls, no activities, no street sweeping, no nothing, our city, this area would contribute almost four hundred tons of solids per year. It seems like a lot. What it comes to is point zero eight tons per year per acre. If you look at an agricultural out, agricultural uses, they start off with a requirement of about five tons per acre per year. So we are orders of magnitudes less than that. With good practices, the agriculture community has been working to reduce their deposit of so, total suspended solids. Based on the 2004 study, with almost four hundred tons, our twenty percent is about eighty tons per year. This will need to be updated to reflect our current conditions. One of the things that I will note at this point is that back in 2004, the rules were that we were required, we would have been required to reduce by forty percent. The federal government, when they initiated these rules, they put in a requirement for a twenty percent reduction. Back when we first started these rules, the state of Wisconsin decided to be more strict in their enforcement, and they started with a forty percent. This current administration passed a law that reduced that back down to twenty percent for new communities. Current communities that were under the rules, if they were already at twenty-eight, thirty, thirty-two percent, under the, this new rule, they must maintain it whatever they were at when the law went into effect. They can't backslide. But new communities like us, we're at twenty percent. Storm sewer system map. We need to submit a map to DNR within twenty-four months. We have that map already, and as we were talking earlier about our GIS, that is also being converted into the GIS format as part of the contract effort. They're going to assist us with verifying that data, and that goes along with that illicit discharge that we were talking about before. That's how the DNR knows how many pipes are dumping stormwater into the round tree. Annual report. It's due March 31st of every year. If the permit is issued in 2014, and chances are very good that it will be sometime later, the first report will be due March 31st, 2016, to cover those activities in 2014 and 15, and then annually after that. The report covers our implementation of all the other goals that we've talked about, inspections, enforcement actions, and it also has a place for our budget review. They tell, we talk about what we budgeted and spent in the previous year and submit the budget for the current calendar year. 2014 actions. Right now, we anticipate receiving the letter from DNR requesting that we apply for the coverage sometime later this spring or early summer. And then, as we approach budget time, we need to budget in 2015 for our compliance activities. 2015 and beyond, we need to begin work to meet the permit requirements. I have spoken with the, with my counterparts over at the university, and they would like to work with us and cooperate with us. I think that there may be some opportunities to collaborate and, and save some money on both sides of the equation. The university has had to have a permit on its own for, for the last few years now, so now that we're also involved, it would be very easy for us to collaborate on, on some of these activities. Cost estimates. 2014, minimal costs at this point. We need to submit our, our approval, and any minimal activities I think we can absorb within our current budget. 2015, I'm estimating that we'll need to increase our stormwater budget by a hundred and fifty-five to a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars to account for studies, developing the ordinances, engineering efforts, additional inspections, sweepings, cleanings, and things like that. How I came up with that was I, I basically used the information from... How I came up with that was I basically used the information from our 2004 report and indexed it for inflation. So that's where we go from there. 2016 to 18, we can reduce that a little bit. I'm saying that we increase it by one hundred and forty to one hundred and sixty-five thousand over the 2014 level, and then adjust it for inflation, of course, plus any capital projects. What I mean by that is if in our reports and in our stormwater management plan, we end up that we are at, say, eighteen percent, and we need to get that extra two percent, we may need to do a capital project to put in a stormwater pond in our particular location to help us get that remaining couple of percent to make us meet the goals. So if there's a capital project that we need to do in order to meet those goals, that would go into our planning, probably in the 2016 to 18 timeframe. And to recap, by the summer of this year, we will be required to have a DNR stormwater permit. Within eighteen months, we will have to have our initial programs and ordinances to DNR for their review and approval. By March 31st, 2016, we submit our first annual report. We budget an additional one hundred and fifty-five thousand in 2015 for stormwater compliance. And the good news is that in cooperation and collaboration with the university, hopefully that number will come down, and we can move forward from there. Can we have the lights, please? Do you have any questions at this time?
Is there any funding for this? Or is this one of these unfunded mandates?
This is mainly an unfunded mandate. There is the possibility that we can get some grant money, seventy percent grant money to help us with updating our plan. It's a potential. The problem is that we got seventy percent money to do the initial report back in 2004. I don't know how ready the DNR would be to give us money again to update this report. Some indications say that they have done that in the past for other communities, but it's dicey.
Howard, this might give us a little thing to think about with our finishing the broad, the street project that we have going on, or going to have going on, because of dumping some of that stormwater after it moves down, just letting it disperse, therefore can pick up more siltation and run down into the Roundtree, I believe it is, down there.
Correct.
So maybe something to think about that right now.
The pond that was an alternate in our project would have done some reduction in solids. I don't have the calculations for that. It would have done some, you know, if need be, if that's what we decide to do at a later point in time, we could, in fact, adjust that and create a pond at a later date there if that's what we feel is what we need to get up to our twenty percent.
The one part that really comes to my mind is the part that will end up down past the portion of Bob Clair's land where that's going to run that down and then spread it out.
Mm-hmm.
That, as that water runs through there, it's getting close to the Roundtree. It's a real easy way to pick up a lot more siltation bouncing down there at the way it's going to be directed at this present time.
The idea here is that, you know, what we try to do is we try to slow the water down as much as we can so that it minimizes the amount of sediment that it tries to pick up. The water currently runs there now, so at this point, that will be accounted for in our reports as part of the current condition. So anything that we do that would reduce, reduce the velocities, reduce any of that would give us some small increment of credits. But that could also be an area that we could look at and pursue for additional management activities.
Because it sounded like with the proposal that they're going to actually be putting more water down there than what currently goes down there naturally with the change.
It will get down there quicker because it'll, more of it will be in the pipes and less of it will go over land. The drainage area for that portion that goes down behind Grant and May Street, that's pretty much the same. So there really isn't any additional water that's going to go there. It's just going to get there quicker and faster because it's going to be collected in the pipes rather than a lot of it staying above land and going through people's yards and things like that to that same point in the backyard. Thank you.
Do we get any credit for recent projects that we've done, such as Valley Road, such as Sunset Drive? We've put thousands of dollars into projects that have reduced contribution to the water.
Yes. That will all be factored in when we do our reports, but you are correct. A lot of those things that we have already done, the swale and stormwater management ponds, for example, on going to Valley Road, the work that we did on Hathaway Street and other places like that, through Jewett Circle and down through there, those will also give us some credits for some reduction in the pollution load. So those will be factored in as part of that twenty percent.
So Howard, are you saying they're going to use our pollution load from 2004?
No.
Or that we have to calculate a new one?
We have to calculate a new one because since 2004, we've had additional developments.
Okay.
We've added land and, you know, all over the place. So they'll have to do additional calculations. What they do is they, they look at our entire city, and then they say, what would happen if we had no, no controls at all? No street sweeping, no swales, no ponds, no nothing? What would our loading be? It would prob, it'll probably come over four hundred because we've added more territory, more impervious surfaces, more streets, parking lots, things like that. But then, on the backside, what they will do is then they'll start putting in, okay, what are the things that you have right now? So they'll count the swales and the ponds that we've already put in and all the other things that we've done. We count the street sweeping that we already do, and then they'll come out and they'll say, okay, based on the calculations, you started out with this number if you didn't do a thing, and now you're at this number, you're at ten percent, fifteen percent, whatever that number is. And then they'll say, now you have to identify those activities to get you up to the twenty percent. So at that point, it may be additional street sweeping, it may be other activities.
And is they, the Department of Natural Resources, is that who the "they" is that you keep talking about? They will, they will, they will.
Actually, this is a, this would be a consultant that we would hire to assist us in determining...
So we have to, we have to do our own report card?
We do our own report card, and then, and then the DNR reviews our report card. And if they don't believe us, then we have to explain how we got there.
In one of your reports here tonight, it said that we've been selected.
Yes.
Would you explain that? It seems to me we've been, we're expected to do something, not selected.
That was...
Is it because of our ten thousand population, or what is brought this about? We were talking about this a couple of years ago, and now it's coming now.
Yes. Selected is probably a nice euphemism for it, but what we're talking about here is the rules, the law says that any community over ten thousand, as determined in a standard U.S. census every ten years, is required to be part of this law, be under these requirements. So what they're saying is that it has taken them the last four years to get the results of the census and start the rulemaking process that will officially designate Plattville as one of these communities now that we know we are over ten thousand, as counted in the 2010 census. We knew it was coming. It's just, they had to go through their procedures, and it's taken this long.
I also thought your language was interesting when you said, we anticipate receiving a letter requesting that we apply for coverage. What if we just ignore the letter? It's requesting we apply.
I suppose it's the same as the IRS requesting people to submit a ten forty form at tax time. If you don't comply, they'll...
They'll figure it out.
They'll figure it out.
Okay. We know we have a penalty for you.
What are the penalties if we don't comply?
I haven't looked at those, but like most administrative rules, you can be, the city could be fined a certain amount of money per day of violation. So it could be a thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars, twenty thousand, whatever the number is in the rules, per day that we refuse to comply or we cannot comply. The DNR will work with people as long as they're making the good faith efforts. There are rules in place that say that if you identify that you cannot make your twenty percent by the time that, that DNR initially establishes you meeting that twenty percent, as long as you show the good faith on what you're doing, how you're getting there, they allow the DNR to work with you and have, have a consent decree that, that will give you a waiver in order to extend your time limits. You know, I don't see them being very hard-nosed about it unless the city decided to out-and-out refuse.
So basically, we're waiting to get the official letter? I think you said something, spring, summer? We would have to actually address this again?
That's correct. This is basically to let you know that it's coming and let you know the magnitude of the impacts on the city.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
And it was nice to have the presentations presented in the way we did this evening, which, so, that's something we haven't had the pleasure of doing before.
Thanks to our communications...
So do we specially thank Ryan for his technical expertise in getting these PowerPoints onto the TV? Is that who did it?
It was a combination between Jody and Ryan.
Yep.
All right, well, thank both of you. Are you both fourth graders, or what? You know, generally speaking with technology, if you don't know how, if you ask a fourth grader, they can, they can tell you how.
Yeah. I assure you, they're way beyond that.
All right. Item D is Housing Authority Board Recommendation Regarding Appointments. That's a long title, but Marilyn Gachak is here to speak to us as a member of the Housing
Marilyn Gachak, 235 Virgin Avenue, and I am a member of the Plattville Housing Authority Board. You can all sit back and relax. I'm not here to ask you for any money. I am here to ask the council for permission to extend the term of one of our board members for five years. Five years ago, the Plattville Housing Authority was in a period of transition. We had lost our director, who had retired, and we came to the council to ask that board members be allowed to serve two consecutive terms rather than having to go off for a year in between terms. And thank you, the council did approve that. Today, we find ourselves in a somewhat similar situation in terms of transition. We have a new director. We have one member who has served on the board for only one year. We have one member who has resigned. We have a five-member board. So for purposes of continuity, we're asking that the member, one of the members whose term has expired and who has served the two consecutive terms, we would like to keep that person on the board for another five years. If you are willing to or want to sit here any longer, since I see you have a closed session on the agenda, I can answer questions if you have them about what is going on. Part of it is that at our board meeting this afternoon, we were told about the, how can I put this? The governor and our legislature is very concerned about voter fraud. The housing and urban development people are very concerned about conflicts of interest between landlords and the housing board. And what happened five years ago was that one of our board members is a landlord who has our, some of our clients in her facility. And we had to go to HUD and make a special request and to justify asking that that particular board member be allowed to stay on the board. So they considered a conflict of interest, and they have become even more rigid about concern, about conflict of interest, meaning that they do not want landlords serving on our board. And this does not necessarily involve landlords who have clients of ours in their facilities. This is landlords, period. What I'm trying to tell you is that it's difficult enough to find people to serve on boards and commissions. We, we really would appreciate if you would allow our board member, who's at the end of her second term, to stay on five years. As I said, we've got the possibility of three board members who will go off next year. One of them is myself. My term is up at the end of this next year, and I do not intend to come and ask you for an extension. So the difficulty of replacing board members, along with this whole transition with our new chair, our new, I'm sorry, our new executive director, by the way, with whom we are very pleased. She's, she's done a wonderful job, learning a very, very difficult and complicated job. But we would like to give her all the support we can, and that partially involves your being willing to let us have our board member for another five years. At the end of, which time, by the way, she does not intend to ask you for another extension. Okay. Questions?
Marilyn, just for the benefit of those who may be listening, who don't have a clue what the Housing Authority does, could you, you know, briefly explain the purpose of the Housing, I mean, there may be people in the...
I don't have a clue.
You don't know what you do.
Uh-uh.
Then we won't reappoint you for another five years.
No, I'm not going to go for another five years. The Housing Authority is a part of a government program, okay? So we're talking federal and state government, both. And we, it is our job to help people in the, in affording housing. So it basically has to do with helping low-income... So it basically has to do with helping low-income people find housing. And there are housing authorities throughout the country who own the facilities into which they put their clients. So they own the rental property. Our board has never done that. Our, our connection is with, simply with landlords whom we are very pleased to have agreed to participate in our program. So we don't own any property. We simply issue vouchers to people who qualify, and they're on their own to go out and find the housing that we can afford to subsidize for them. But it's client, renter, landlord, basically. That answer the question? I do have a clue what we do.
Yeah, I figured. Any other questions? Comments? Okay, then this request will be on for action next time.
I'm just, I'm, let me just add quickly that at our meeting, the meeting today was basically, one item on the agenda was, do we wish to ask for our board member, you know, to be extended, to have her term extended for one year or five? And she was prepared to go for one year. I was to ask you for one year. But in our conversation, and our new director, who had done some research with HUD, as I indicated, they're becoming very rigid about people with conflict of interest. And it became pretty obvious that if she were extended for one year, that if she then elected to go off for a year and then wanted to come back on the board, we were going to have to go through the whole process of asking for a waiver for her. And that was, we went through a lot of trouble to justify her being on the board in the first place. So, okay, any other questions? The city has been very supportive of the Platteville housing program, and we want you to know, the board wants you to know, we really, really appreciate it.
And just for clarification, the, the Housing Authority Board is autonomous? And, and the executive director of it is not a city employee?
No. The director that was initially part of the program was a city employee, and the Housing Authority was part of the city. When she retired, we, you know, we had no idea where to go with that. And what we did was, the city contracted with Southwest CAP to run the program. So our former director, who just retired, she basically was a Southwest CAP employee. And that was not working very well. So we asked HUD if it were possible for us to just break all ties with city, with Southwest CAP, and become autonomous. And they agreed, that was acceptable. I think that if you want to really designate, what is the relationship between the city and the PHA? It becomes a little dicey. We are autonomous. Our funding comes from HUD and goes into our separate Platteville Housing Authority account in Mount City Bank. However, we are Platteville. We are a city commission in the sense that our members have to be appointed by the common council. And we are, hopefully, are abiding by the rules set by the council. Have any other questions?
I don't think so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item is closed session. We actually have two closed sessions listed, so I think motion would be in order where you note both of them. So if someone wants to make that motion, please.
I move we go to closed session per State Statute 1985, parent one, parent C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. And this is a discussion of revised parent pay recommendations. And also per State Statute 1985, parent one, parent E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties or investing in public funds or conducting other specified public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, possible land acquisition.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go into closed session, and we'll vote.
So do I.
Gillian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yeah.
Motion carries. We'll take about a five-minute break, folks, before we start our closed session.